...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would make a motion to adopt the agenda with the change on the amended agenda with the change under old business in the minutes. Hold it, I'm going to go again. You want to... Well, in regards to the minutes, I just wanted to see, I thought that we had discussed that under lobbyist tax advisory committee that the council would be deciding and addressing what funds would be handed over to the lobbyist tax committee rather than the lobbyist tax advisory committee will be addressing what funds will be used for.
Sorry, I have a minute. Yes.
Who's here, second?
Second.
Fill in favor. Aye. Your motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I think that's where I jumped.
I move to adopt the consent agenda with the changes according to Councilman Warren's suggestions.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, fill in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move down to guest speakers, communication informational items. No guest speakers, okay. Move on to public hearing on annexation, removal, territorial, rural protection, fire.
The air quality.
It's on the next page for new business.
Okay.
You don't want to get it over.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
He's under new business.
Okay. I can find my papers on that.
So you're opening up a public hearing on those issues?
An annexation, removal, territory of Lakeview Rural Fire Protection District. And I have an ordinance here. This could still mean the same thing.
The ordinance is to be adopted later. We have to have a public hearing on it first on the matter. So are you opening it up for a public hearing?
Yeah.
You need to stay for time, and then you need to read the public hearing procedures.
That isn't yet done because that's on the...
That comes.
I was just going by what Janine had told me yesterday.
Maybe either...
If you'd like, I can. So at this time, the council has opened up a public hearing on annexing certain property, which is the poster on town, specifically lots off of Ninth Street whereby there's an application for building a dental office. The lots are lots one through forty-eight inclusive of block two ninety-six, the Oregon Valley Land Company's addition to Lakeview Order. Daryl, can you kind of help people, provide some context of where it's located and kind of what's being planned there?
Certainly. Now, this is one block of the O'Veal addition. It's located at the intersection of South Ninth Street and the railroad, between South M Street and the railroad tracks, just south of Ninth Street. There's one whole block that's vacant there. There's nothing on the property. Utley Realty asked that it be annexed into the town so they could develop the property and get water and sewer services from the town. They also did a zone change on that. That was at the planning commission at their last meeting. It's currently an industrial zone, so they asked for a zone change to a commercial zone so they could develop the property with some commercial uses. So the annexation and the zone change were ran at the same time, and you have the annexation before you do.
For a public comment or hearing or any questions, if you guys have on the particular. My understanding was there was no opposition at the planning. But we don't want to go into that yet. Go ahead.
The only question I have is the alleyway, did they say anything about vacating that?
Not at this time. Not at this time. They did not request to vacate it. I'm sure that will happen.
It likely will. Just to add...
And just something else, just for the council, there are two lots, really the first two lots, I think it's remember...
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four, twenty-five are actually owned by the town. I think we got them when we ended up as part of Ninth Street because I think we have some of the water and sewer system in those lots. And so later on in the agenda, we're going to be asking the town to consent to have its own property annexed in because otherwise the property is not contiguous to, and that's necessary. It is in UGV though.
So just for clarification, are lots twenty-four and twenty-five on the, I guess that would be the southeast corner of the tracks of Ninth Street and M Street? Or is that across the street where the pastor's at?
It's on the south side.
On the railroad tracks?
It's on the south side of Ninth Street, on the east side of the railroad tracks.
On M and right next to Chargers, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why it's literally running the street right there.
Thanks.
So they're empty.
Okay. And that was reading the hearing procedure?
No, he tested to get a comment and then closed this one. And then also...
Are there any more comments on this? Okay, then we'll go ahead and close this hearing on the annexation and removal territory from the Lakeview Rural Fire Protection District. Is that the right one?
It is.
Yeah. Okay. I've got many of them here that it's... So I've got a hearing schedule here that I need to read.
Okay. Did you need to close it?
Close that one. I've got to read this before I open that one, is what I was informed. Okay. Said this hearing is a legislative hearing authorized and required by ORS chapters one ninety-seven and two twenty-seven by the Lakeview Ordinance Number seven eighty-two, known as the Planning Ordinance, and specifically the Development Code, which establishes rules for public hearings. On such time, we have a problem. I will conduct this hearing informally and substantially as follows. The applicant who has the burden of proof and his or her representative will make an introductory statement including testimony as to why the proposal or other relief should be granted. We will then listen to any comments by the attorney, which should be made part of the record. Persons who are present and support the application will be heard next. Correspondent in support of the application will be read. Questions then may be directed to the proponents through the presiding official. Persons who are present and who oppose the application will be heard. Correspondents in opposition to the application, if any, will be read. Questions then may be directed to the opponents through the presiding official. Any interested public agencies or utilities will be heard. The proponent will then have a chance to respond to the objections, if any. The opponents will then be allowed to respond. The members of the commission and town attorney may then direct questions to the applicant or opponents to assist in arriving at a decision. The presiding official will close the hearing and the commission will begin to deliberate. The commission will make a decision or continue its deliberations to another time and place. A copy of this procedure may be handed to the applicant at the time of the application and submitted and handed to the audience in lieu of formal reasons of this proceeding at the hearing. Okay. Assistant, a public hearing, number, application number seven fifteen by Randy Utley. Fable Utley Corporation for Comprehensive Plan and Land Use District MAP Amendment to Change the Plan and Zone Designations for Block Two Ninety-Six, Oregon Valley Land Company, second addition from general industrial to central commercial located on the southwest corner of South Ninth and M Street.
So at this juncture, if anybody from the applicant is here and wants to make a little big statement, this would be the time to do that.
Right, can I have the hearing procedure? Thank you. Which one?
The hearing procedure. So is there anybody from the applicant at this point that wishes to address the council? I'm not hearing any, is the attorney here or the applicant?
Either one of you.
Okay. Next, are there any persons present who support the application? And I don't believe we received any correspondence.
Nope. When they're reporting to the planning commission, there was no complaint.
Are there any questions for the proponents of the proposal?
I have none.
Is there anybody present who opposes the application at this time? Being none, is there anybody that has any questions for the opponents of this? Also being none. Is there anybody here from a local public agency or utility regarding this issue? None. And since there are no objections, we don't, there's no chance to respond. There are no opponents, so that's not also present. Does the town council have any questions for the opponent or just the general public? Mr. Mayor, at your election, you can close the proceeding at this time.
As to four fourteen, we'll close that proceeding there, and we'll move on down to public comment. Do we have any public comments? Being none, we'll move on to old business, the one-stop meeting for water improvement for the state, we have a meeting, and we will move forward with that and see how we come out.
Do we need a report, or to draw a report on that?
We can go into some detail. It was a good meeting. We're still looking about, what, nine point three, nine dollars?
Nine point five.
Nine point five.
Nine five.
Yeah. Nine dollars to do all the improvements that we've talked about. At the next council meeting, which is November thirteenth, I believe, we will have a work session beforehand and then a discussion during the council meeting as far as how the council wants to move forward. If we, there's two funding sources that, two or three, depending on which way we go, but one is through USDA Rural Development, which we can get up to five million dollars on that one. And there's also the Special Public Works Fund that we can get the rest of our funding for, hopefully, depending and depends on the rates and everything. But anyway, we will discuss that, how we want to move forward, and then discuss the fact that the rates for the water will be thirty-four ninety-six by the time the project is ended, if we go with the entire project or however we're going to go. So that will be discussed at our next council meeting in further detail.
Okay. We'll move on to the new business, which is Resolution nine forty-six, consent to annexation.
Simple business is what you were talking about, where we need to consent to annex our own property, so therefore I make a motion to approve Resolution nine forty-six in the matter of authorization of the mayor to sign the rural consent to annexation.
Motion made in second, fill in favor.
Aye.
Move on down to ordinance eight sixty-six, annexation of certain territory into corporate limits of the town of Lakeview withdrawing the same from the Rural Fire Protection District.
So the council, the postings, you have in your packet of that day of publication showing the postings and newspaper publication of the matter of public hearing, which we held earlier, resulted in the done. The all owners of all real property have consented to the annexation, and it's an necessary prerequisite to doing the zone change. It's obvious that we can't do a amendment of the property of the plan or the zone change without having the property within. So it is, all the prerequisites have been made. We're not hearing the opposition, so if the council desires, you guys are ready to authorize this because all these prerequisites have been made.
Motion on this?
Motion read by title only. Ordinance eight sixty-six.
I'll second. Fill in favor.
Aye.
I would move that we vote on ordinance number eight sixty-six, an ordinance demanding in the current annexation of certain territory into the corporate limits of the town of Lakeview pursuant to the provision of ORS two-two-two-point-one-two-five, ORS two-two-two-point-five-two-oh, and ORS two-two-two-five-two-four, and withdrawing the same from the Lakeview Rural Fire Protection District.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, fill in favor.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, ordinance eight sixty-seven, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan of MAPs and zoning map of town ordinance number seven seventy-six. If you're most no matter.
I move that we deal with ordinance number eight sixty-seven by title only.
Second.
Fill in favor.
Aye.
Okay.
I move we vote on ordinance eight six-seven, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map and zoning map of town ordinance number seven seventy-six.
Second. Who's here, second? Fill in favor.
Aye.
Okay.
Could you give us a short explanation?
Yes, so what's going on is Red Rock, to get the sewer and water extension funding from the state, Red Rock had to be able to produce a certain amount of jobs. The town has required Red Rock to post security in a form acceptable to us to, if that does not happen, because we end up, this is a refundable source of funding for the sewer and water extension, every job over the certain limit they do not create, they have money in an escrow account that they have to pay us back so we can pay back the state. So it's basically sort of a loan, but it's a refundable loan. So as long as they create the jobs for four calendar quarters, then that can go away. But if we have that there to make sure that the town is not on the hook for basically extending Catterer's Road and then owing money back, because again, it's a rural development, not rural development, but it was an economic development phase, funding source from the state, and that was the necessary prerequisite to create X number of jobs. So if they aren't able to do that within that timeframe, then they have to turn that money over to us and turn it over to the state. So the town is not taking any risk by extending sewer and water to the Red Rock facility. So this is just giving, this agreement here is just authorizing a third party. It's similar to, I guess, corporate escrow agent, kind of like what you'd see in a land company situation, like Amerititle, something like that, the neutral third party that holds on to it and then follows mutual instructions or a court instruction. If we ever had to go to court with Red Rock, they'd turn it over. So they will not release it without joint instructions from both of us. Not when we know the money is sitting there and not touchable by any other source so that we are not out the...
So that refunds the money that it took us to build the...
It refunds.
Put in the pipe systems and sewer and everything like that.
Yes. It basically refunds the money we got from the state to do that.
Okay.
And again, once the time period passes, then that is refunded by the operator anyway. So if something did happen, had to have been with Red Rock, then after that time period has passed, everybody is off of the board of state. But we have to have that security in there because otherwise we are not, Red Rock, if they end up going away, the town of Lakeview is the signatory on the loan to the state.
I would move the approved resolution number nine forty-seven in the matter of authorizing the mayor to sign the escrow agreement with Red Rock File Fields LLC.
Senator. I'll second.
Fill in favor.
Aye.
Okay, we also have here Morello change order, extension for time. This is the one doing our water pipe, is that correct?
That's correct. We did, we amended correctly. We took almost a month to award that job when it was bid. They informally at that time asked for an extension, some more time. I didn't get an official request till now, and that's probably better anyway.
How long the extension is that?
Thirty-first of October.
The first, tell them what?
Thirty-first of October.
Is that the first of October?
Yeah. You're paving everything now.
But they will be done. And everything is in working order? Have they filled in all the holes?
No, not completely yet.
Because there's a nasty hole in front of goose tracks fabric.
Yeah, it probably is. They still have three, they still have three pipe tie-ins to do, so they have to complete those as well as complete the paving. There's some paving areas they skipped because of those tie-ins. So that will complete, that will allow enough time to complete the project. The pipes are in, we just have paving cleanup.
I guess my other question is, is it working?
The pipe?
How many times have they replaced some of those areas? I've seen them dig up same area at least twice sometime.
Oh, you mean the contractor or historically?
Is the contractor going to leave us with pipes that actually work?
Yes, they are. Or we will not pave it.
I didn't have a lot of faith about the second or third time I saw him digging it up.
A lot of things, they filled, they did some of it in sections, and then they filled the pipes back up. We had to make a different tie-in on the pump line because we couldn't keep the pump line down very long, so that was some of the, some of the things you saw dug up twice. We dug them up first to find it, make sure we had the right fittings to connect, and then they filled them back up, and then we did the tie-ins. The pump line is working from the pump well field up to the tank that's installed. There's one section of distribution line that isn't online yet, search some of the homes and businesses down on Second Street.
What happens if they're not finished by October thirty-first?
Then you have the option of charging them the liquidated damages or the...
I would love to do that. They haven't been easy people to work with, Daryl. The people who live along the...
Well, I'm sure they're getting tired of it and they're getting cranky. I can understand.
They can't be possibly as cranky as some of the people who are living along Second Street.
But actually, as a contractor and doing the underground and whatnot, they haven't been that bad.
Do we need a motion to accept this change order?
Yes.
A motion to approve change order number one for the pump and distribution line replacement on North Second Street, and like to point out that this change order includes no additional filing requests.
I'll take it.
Motion made in second, fill in favor.
Aye.
Okay.
Who's the second on that?
I would.
Okay, hand them down, program, action plan up to, you're up.
My name is Peter Brewer, and I'm with the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, Air Quality out of Bend. My mayor, councilors appreciate the chance to present the update for the PM Advanced Plan as prepared by the Air Quality Committee in conjunction with the Q. For some years now, the town has had, and county have had issues with compliance particular matters, as you're probably well aware, dating back to about two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, when the TM two-point-five standard was promulgated by EPA, yet we didn't have enough monitoring data here in town to say whether we're in with the standard or out of the standard. We started collecting that data initially, after a few years of collecting, looked like we're in, but then we fell out of alignment with the three-year air quality standard and failed it a few times, but then came back in, and now we're slightly out as the advance forewarned. But in two thousand and fourteen, the town and county, in conjunction with the Q, prepared a PM Advanced Plan to help come into compliance with the standard. This is a program, also in partnership with EPA, to work proactively to get in compliance with the standard, hopefully before EPA draws that fine line in the sand and says we're in compliance or out of compliance. They may not do that for a few years yet. They usually will do that again when they're evaluating the standard and propose a new standard, which they'll do right now. It's been delayed some, maybe with this administration, but it's on schedule for, start looking at that in a couple of years. So we have still a little bit of a grace period right now unless EPA does something different. We prepared the plan to attack our fine-for-ticket matter, which the biggest contributor has been from woodstows and fireplaces and other wood burning devices, possibly a little bit from open burning, open burning out in county, and potentially from prescribed fire, although we think we have that now, a little bit from industrial sources, and some from some road What the plan did at that time is laid out a number of strategies to come into compliance and to work towards that. And we've been doing that for a number of years now, and every year we've updated the plan in conjunction with the Air Quality Committee. That's what I'm going to do a little review on today with you and ultimately seek concurrence. and see, ultimately seek concurrence with the plan update, but also seek any input that you might have, any insights or anything new. We're all ears for what we can do to combat our challenges here. For your information, we'll also present this to the county commissioners in about two months, post-election, for them and seek their concurring input as well. I'll go through the plan. I think you have a copy of it with you. Initially, there's executive summary, so if you want to check the chase, you just read through that. But we're monitoring for this past year. It showed that we had some challenges. We had high levels of PM two-point-five and early, this is 2017 year. So it's actually a year, probably a year and a half ago, going back in time. In January 2017, we had some air stagnation challenges. A few bad days fell at the wrong time and we were, a few strikes against us. And then again in November, December timeframe, especially in December with about two months stagnation period last year, you may well remember, it was a challenging time with a lot of coal there. Maybe a number of non-compliant wood stove households, you could say, inability to smoke in the area that eventually caused us to exceed the standard. Now, just for your information, in keeping track of the standard, this does back out any contributions from wildfire. So the wildfire smoke that we incurred in 2017 wasn't a whole lot, but there's enough days there, but it is not counted against us for the air quality standard. But we unfortunately had a challenging time and had a couple of days pretty high. And our third highest number is what we count for the year. That was about fifty-six micrograms, standard being thirty-five point five. However, the standard is a three-year average. Monitor is down at Center and M for your information. For the three-year monitoring data, which is really our compliance look, where are we with the standard? Currently, we're just barely over a thirty-six point one, micrograms between the meter and the standard's thirty-five point five. So we were well under last year with the three-year average and felt pretty comfortable, but this past year was a challenge and caused us to slightly exceed the standard. So we have an opportunity now in front of us to keep working, working towards cleaner air and better compliance. Let's see, there's a mission. If you have any questions, please ask as we go along. I do have another handout. This shows you that on the year, for 2017, how the air quality changed throughout the year. The black line represents the actual data. The orange line is the standard. So it shows you not only summertime smokes of what we saw then, but the winter time initially in the January timeframe and then again in the December timeframe. There's a few excerpts. I just showed you throughout the year of where we had challenging times and difficulties that we did. That's on our daily monitoring, which is an electronic monitoring system called a nephrometer. However, the standard is actually measured with a mass sample, how many micrograms of fine particulate matter in the air. And that's taken about every three days. And so sometimes we may have had an exceedance on a day, but we didn't have a sampling day that day. So it is accounted against us. That just gives you an idea of how we fare during the day and also the challenges we had during the summer time.
The summertime August and September beats or the wildfires?
Yes.
They were.
They were.
Mr. Puff, has a question.
Unfortunately, this last year, we had a lot more wildfire days. We had a horrible time. So the same chart, next year, we'll have a lot more spikes.
I have a few questions here. Where are the monitoring points? How many of them are there? And who determines the wildfire days?
There's one monitoring, one monitor in town. It's on Center and M Street.
Center and M?
Yep. And if there's two monitors there, one's an electronic monitor called a nephrometer that every minute is giving a signal and is correlated to the actual PM two-point-five.
Spectographic?
Yeah, yeah, it's photo, photometric. It looks at absorption, essentially absorption of light, diffraction of light, for total light extinction. The actual monitoring then is also at that site, a little different monitor that's a, takes an actual sample about every three days, not quite. Sometimes equipment isn't working right, sometimes everything's on fine and we're going along three days in a row, or sometimes the operator has a challenge of leaving that. That's at the same site.
And these are done remotely or locally?
Locally, it's the mass sampler. Remotely?
I meant as far as, do we have a person that monitors this remotely or is it a person here in town who gets those results?
I guess I'd say both. We have, they're monitored remotely and yet a person is in town managing the every-third-day sample, the physical sample. So they are there, it's about once a week, they show up and service, service things and update where it needs to be.
And then the last question was, who reports the wildfire days?
DEQ does. Essentially, any time in the summertime that we have, we have air that's poor. If you only have a burn a day here or there and it's a very light year, there's a little more challenge for us to document that it is a wildfire. But for the last two years, this year and last year, it's pretty obvious that the entire state or half the state was impacted. The EPA is a lot more lenient with how we document that. But we do document it so that when EPA calls us on the carpet to say, "Well, gee, it looks like your concentration is really high", they can say, "Well, these days, this timeframe, these were excluding from the database and these were proposing excluded."
Any chance do you happen to know who the agencies are that report to DEQ those wildfire days?
It'd be BLM, Forest Service, and ODF primarily. And then we watch, we watch too. I know all over the news.
Do those come out of Portland or do they come out of here out of?
Locally, out of the dispatch, the air agency department.
Okay, good, thank you.
South Central, I remember. Let's see. There's a missions update showing you about contributions from different sources. One thing I'd say there's current contributions. We don't have Red Rock into that. If they start contributing in the future, they will, they'll add some to the current, but they're a factor into the future contributions. So over time, we've implemented a number of strategies to help comply with the standard. We talked about that and then going for our future strategies. We have a mandatory wood stove curtailment, sole source curtailment being no longer available on sole source heat. We have to have an alternative source of heat that we'll use on red days. But also, the main part of our program is a wood stove advisory program, which we really just call our red-yellow-green or green-yellow-red advisory. And from November first through February twenty-eighth, every day, an advisory is made through assistance with Don McFory, providing that update to the town through a number of different outlets. That helps to show whether it's good to burn or okay if you have a certified stove or it's not a good day, it's a poor air quality day. Last year, we had seven red advisory calls and thirty-three yellow and sixty-seven green within that two-month window, or four-month window of time.
So there were only the seven days that they had to resort in 2017 to the mandatory?
Yeah. Maybe we missed one in there or so. There should have been a red. It wasn't a red. But it was about seven days.
And it was lighter than 2018?
Was the monitor was down type of that this last year?
Okay.
Was it a down type monitor?
But as far as the red days?
We haven't had a, we may have had a red day or two, but we haven't exceeded the standard yet this year. So we're doing well this year. We have no strikes against us so far. We get two strikes, third strike is generally the trouble.
Peter, since we're on that, can I ask a quick question? Kind of reverse back to your executive summary. You got my concern up when you mentioned the fact that, well, right now, we're on the PM Advanced Plan, or the two-point-five plan. We're not quite on the winning side of the tether, or I'll put it that way. We're hoping we're going to get there, but we're not quite there. But you said that there might be, and I know that's might be, but some changes made perhaps in the future by the EPA. Are you talking, going down, we went from ten to two-point-five? Are you talking going down even smaller than two-point-five?
It'd be probably keeping two-point-five the same. Maybe it'd be going smaller to like a one-microgram level, but possibly keeping PM two-point-five the same, but possibly lowering it to standard to thirty or twenty-five micrograms. Even lower.
And that's good for our health, but at the same time, we're rarely on that side.
Oh, I know. Right now, it's like, gosh, just let us get through this.
Okay, and I'm sorry to go back to that.
That's very, very important. It's likely, it's gone down in the past. Went from sixty-five to thirty-five, but now it's more incremental to thirty or twenty-five or somewhere in between. It's twenty-five in Europe at the moment. Doesn't mean that they're all complying happy, happily. There's a lot of challenges in compliance with that.
With that, yeah.
There would be a lot of challenges in the US, across the states with that. But we'll see what the science says, probably in a few years. Okay. As part of the wood stove advisory program, we did some compliance surveys, go out and check to see who's kicking a lot of smoke out of their smokestack and knocking on doors and providing information. That's also provided through the town. Primarily, even though there's punitive levels, it's information just for the people to comply. Just giving you information, education out there, helping in goodwill. Please go along with it and comply and help everyone out with their... The main goal here is good, healthy air, clean air.
Do we have any funding left for the exchanges?
There's none. I, SCO Ed has nothing. They gave me a money savings program. Today, I called Portland and they gave me a phone number to see if they had any leftover grants, money left over from another program to help with energy assistance over in our area. Though I have not heard back from them.
And the town does have some money, some loans that they've got that the town does have. Do we have to redistribute it? Is there any indication, do we have any data on how many old-style wood burning stoves are out there? How many houses you knock on the door and say, "Uh..."
I'm not sure of that number off the top of my head.
I wonder.
I'd look at somebody who's been around for a little while. It'd probably be in the two thousand fourteen.
I think, I think there's still some out there.
Yes.
A lot of our replacements were in the town, not in the county. And I think not a good portion are in our surrounding county area, like the south end of town. I noticed that when I go out, when I was out last year, I had numerous houses that they're not certified stoves.
I've seen some huge stacks of wood being inside some of the houses around them. It's like, oh, boy.
Yeah.
You're going to be warm, but we can't breathe.
But we're working towards the goal of enforcement in the areas outside of our town's jurisdictions as well, so that's...
Yeah, jumping to the future efforts, we're looking at proposing to the county to look at a compliance mechanism in our ordinance and bring that in alignment with the town. And whether they enforce it, whether there's agreement between co-enforcement somehow. We'll see what, how they go on that, but they need to have enforcement or compliance.
You'll be doing that, when did you say?
Starting January.
Leading with the county, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. We'll give a review of this effort in November.
So the worst month we have is December and we're not going to be talking to them then, right?
Right.
November.
We'll talk to them through Commissioner Kessler. But whether or not something will happen, that's a challenge. And if they care if we knock on doors, I don't think they'd care if Don went out and knocked on some doors. Yet that's, that's more of a work, a work-level item, doing other work and et cetera. But we can also try to get addresses and send something, some information in the mail.
Do you have the south end of town?
I, I mean, she's in there, so.
I do have door knockers. I have door knockers that are taped to, you hang them on your door. They're taped to ornaments and like your grass is too tall. You can write in on the door knocker what like your, the smoke in your wood stove. It's too much, it's a red day, you're not supposed to burn. You can change, I can change that.
Actually, I did go down one day last, last year. I was touring around in the morning, looking around the stacks. I'll do that again a couple of times.
Well, it's, it's a way to go into the commissioners meeting with a little bit of ammunition.
And there is familiarity with Commissioner Winters. That's the challenging areas, so that will be helpful. As is mentioned, there is a town block grant monies. He gives a tune of twenty thousand dollars that might be there about for wood stove changeouts, which we haven't discussed yet, how to get that advertised and who, who or how it would be distributed to. If it'd be low-income, sole-source type of one or just low-income, changing out an old, uncertified wood stove or certified one, but we'll tackle that.
That's an EPA or DEQ grant?
No, it's actually with the town. Their money's set with the block grant returner.
That we had years ago, it's come back in, but we haven't seen it.
So we'll do that, as well as looking for any new sources of funding. Could be through a supplemental environmental project from a civil penalty. Those are opportunities that I try to flag. They have a stand-in funding request to, this is through DEQ. If there's fines ostensibly by industry, either in Lake County or Clamath County primarily target. And they choose that they can have some fine money go to a supplemental environmental project to do good for the environment. Instead, just going back to the general fund. I put in a flag for Lakeview and for wood stove funding for that. And then any funds of our education outreach involved, primarily wood stove, if it's sizable. But we do look for any funding possible. We're still working with the county to coordinate on reaching out, out into the greater Lakeview area. We'd like to work on getting out to the county more, a little further out, just so they're messaging, "Hey, if it's a red day, don't burn, don't burn your pile there." So we'll see how that goes, to get the support there from the county. But we're working on then with the coordination for education outreach, as well as continuing all the education outreach efforts that we all have to date. well as continuing all the education outreach efforts that we all have today. But it's through radio, through flyers, through any information, handouts that we can, through Facebook, email.
It'll be posted on the town website.
Town website.
And there's a reader board in front.
That's right.
Dispatch.
And now in front of the, the fairgrounds.
Mm-hmm, and in the fair, at the fairgrounds, the flags will be hanging with the outside building. And then in the second story of here, there's the stoplight.
We're gonna primarily the outreach efforts. If there's anything new that someone can think of, that would be great. And we've done newspaper articles before, and I'd be willing to speak in front of any service groups with, with somebody from the community, as perhaps that would be pretty fine. Um, let's see. We may look at any alternative or other monitoring aspects. There's some very expensive monitors that are available now. May look at obtaining one and placing it somewhere else, like either north or south or somewhere, just to get an idea of what the PM levels are, not just at the center of town, in one other place or maybe a few other places. But I'll take one other place right now, a second monitor. And we're also will look at the town ordinance and see if there's any possibility for additional ways to reduce wood smoke. Anything that we've missed there. I'm not sure if there is, but we'll, we'll be reviewing that too. Essentially, we, we think we're working okay towards our goals and that the strategies have worked, other than we seem to have some non-compliers at times, whether they're transient through or new to town, or they just don't care, or they're out of the county, can be hard to reach some people. We've had good luck on some years. Maybe this year will be a good luck here. We'll see. But we also need to continue looking for more compliance and focusing a lot on the compliance and getting the word out, whether it's through any other, or any, any other mechanism on, hey, today is a red day. It's a poor air quality day. Please do not burn. Any, any comments, any insights?
No, I think all, all people are trying to comply with the regulations, but, you know, there's some that the only heat they have is wood.
Yeah.
And on red days, they're gonna burn. I mean, I think, you know, I don't know how you're gonna stop it.
Other than, as we try to, we try to have an alternative source of heat for them. Sometimes they have it and they don't use it. They go, oh, it's expensive. It's electricity. They please just use it. It's not that bad. There's seven days or 10 days a year, please. And there's some mechanisms to help with funding that's also.
I am really interested in the concept of a monitor placed in different places, in different, somewhere in a different location, because I know at one time, there are, I don't know, that's the block on M Street. What is that? I don't know. That block that goes over to the soccer field?
Yeah.
Something like eight out of 10 of those houses had wood stoves. And here's the monitor right next to it. So where, where there are other areas where there aren't as many wood stoves in the area, I think you could balance those two things out a little bit. Part of our problem, of course, is Ninth Street is the border, right? This side is town. This side is county. So if you're on this side and it's a red day, you can't burn. But if you're over here, if you want to, you go ahead and do it.
It all feeds the monitor.
And it all feeds into the monitor. Plus, we get the whole of West Side. We get all the pine trick. And the way our, our town lies with this little cut behind us, that's where everything ends up, is right here on top of us.
Something I may suggest too is periodically, we do, through our laboratory, what we call saturation survey. Maybe we'd set this up for next year to have about three or four of the monitors around and just to do a check and see if, if the current, the current location of the monitor is in the right place, or is there a different place that would be more suitable.
I wonder if the county would be interested in putting one in the south end of town and in their area, so that we would have that data that says, look, we've been telling you this is a problem here.
And we, maybe I'll do that with a, an expensive monitor. It's, it's not that federal reference method.
But it gives you some.
Quality, but a view list of data. And I'll expose that to our lab, as well as we can look at some funding, maybe through, it'd be about $300. We'd have a monitor there that should be good for a few years.
And as long as all those involved who signed on the PM advance plan with DEQ and EPA live up to their expectations that we signed on with, we should be able to get that Ninth Street division taken care of when the county finds this.
Yes, hopefully.
Hopefully.
That's my big question. A few weeks, or it started in January with our new, new license. So any, any concurrence with the, with the plan as proposed or the update?
It's a good report. Appreciate it very much.
Appreciate the effort of the air quality committee. Did a lot of effort.
It's gonna launch process for the town.
Yeah, it'll continue for a few years, but hopefully.
Wait, you need a motion to concur with the plan?
Pardon?
Need a motion to concur with the plans. I've got that. That's the council, so.
Isn't this a, this is a new plan or it's just an update?
It's an annual update.
So, okay.
I don't hear a motion on this updated plan?
I would move that we proceed forward with the PM advance update as presented by the DEQ.
A second?
A second.
Motion, make, motion, make, two seconds, motion, make?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more. This here is a request for annexation out there at 1-870-Rivera Road. There's other annexes, so I could make out city water. And so I think the purpose of this is to establish an towing facility. I'm not sure where, where this is at.
Daryl, I think you've kind of seen this letter. Can you kind of tell us generally where it's?
Yeah, it's on Roberta Avenue, north of Highway 140, between Roberta and Missouri. On the west side of Missouri, when the town annexed that property along the Roberta, they only annexed to the alley. The alley behind Roberta. This appears to be a, an application to annex his property that extends past the alley into the back. He must front Roberta. It looks like his property fronts Roberta. And they want to annex the lots that are directly behind him into the town.
So it's just adjoining our.
Does adjoining property be a money property?
Daryl, what the normal process would this be? That you would submit something to planning, get that approved, and then kind of do it like we did with the last, like we did with the last one, where he gets the proposed use and everything else, then kind of maybe all comes in one package? Because obviously, the use needs to comply with, if it comes in, it needs to be a compliant.
Uh, I don't know anything about it. It says a towing facility there.
Yeah.
We need to look at the zoning.
We need to look in there a little further, I think.
So, just came in and talked to you a little bit. Just give you what I know. So, yeah, the front property is in town, the back part is not. It's in the county. And if he was to come to planning and ask for what he's saying, the purpose of his annexation would be, then I think you're right that the plan, plan, planning commissioner at that time would approve the request if an application is made, but, you know, it's, it's at least my opinion that anyone who wants to be annexed, we should allow them to be annexed. You know, it may not mean that they get to do what they want to do, but, you know, that's a separate process. This process is just simply making a request to be annexed. And I don't see why we should be opposed to that at all.
No additional charges to the community?
Well, I think it needs to be stated clearly in the motion to accept this, is that he will need to go through the planning process.
Yeah.
Which that would cannot be.
Yeah, I mean, this, our authority at this point is only to accept the annexation request. It isn't authorized by landers, correct? So, and I think it should be a pretty straightforward thing if you want to be annexed, that they can consent to it and then they'll get to.
Absolutely.
Legal notices, they have to do.
Absolutely.
But I seem, I must be misunderstanding the annexation process fully. If someone does it voluntarily, it seems like it should be streamlined.
It's again, still up to the council, but yes, there's no approval or anything along those lines.
Some of the what we do.
Right. Just some people usually, some people usually like to prefer, the reason I mentioned is some people like to, you don't necessarily want sour grapes from somebody bringing something in without way for the process. You might let them know before you approve that he might want to check with planning first, so he can do what he's doing. Again, you don't want to.
And that's ultimately where it needed to be, is that it's in the county. And so I told him, you probably should get annexed so that you can then make the request to plan.
That said.
Without, without it being a county, a split jurisdiction issue, where, well, it's how the county might need approval as well.
I would, I would move that we accept his request for the process of annexation and to go before now with allowing to go before the necessary funding needs on. Do you guys want him to, you're accepting it, but do you want us to refer him to planning fir, town planning first to, it would, I think, save him money and things of that nature because a lot of the notices kind of run in the same. It's usually a cheaper process to be compliant. Do you want that option given, or you just want to proceed with the annexation? I, I'll just amend my motion to accept it, you know, or for him to have an opportunity to be told the process first.
And I, I believe I've told him the process. I mean, it's just a matter of, he's got one property. He intends to fence the whole thing. Essentially, whether, you know, it gets the use approved or not, it's gonna be one property. And that's kind of the issue we've got along a lot of reports. A lot of those properties are now coming into the same ownership as the budding road owners. It wasn't always the case. And now that it is becoming more and more the case, that we'll see probably requests for, even vacations on those alleyways to get it split in the property. So I think he should be also encouraged to just to request a vacation on the alley if they're annexed, so they can fence the whole thing. And there's no question about somebody trying to drive through an alleyway that's on map.
But are those alleyways that are on the map going to be utilized by the community in the future, or are they, are they not?
It's just grassland.
Okay.
But, you know, they're still on map. They're still platted. There's still platted roads throughout the whole west side of Roberta Road, so. So you made a motion on, I don't know 100% sure.
The, the motion was to accept his request for annexation, but to notify him of the process, which may save him money. And then he can make that decision to, like, move forward out or review, so to speak.
So essentially contingent upon his acceptance that there's one more step in his fall-through with the PM. I'll second that motion.
Motion, make the second, second paper?
Aye.
All right, this is going down to Mayor and Councilwoman. I really have nothing at this time. Council?
Well, I attended a Lake County Public Safety Coordinating Council meeting last week. We do have a new district, excuse me, Assistant VA who has been hired on a grant, and his primary job will be to work with the drug court and determine eligibility for people who are possibly eligible after being charged. And also an update on the drug court, which is now 12 people in it. And they want to get that increase to possibly 30 during the next year or so. And it's overall been quite successful. I think two or three people have messed up and had to pay their price, but, you know, usually end up sitting in jail or going to the penitentiary, either one, depending on the charges against them. But overall, it's a very good program, hopefully, but we'll be able to continue with it here and forth. Is that it for me? Alan?
Town and the chip meetings are some really good things going on for community health. I appreciate the work that those that are involved, what those programs are doing, especially the grant writing, Chris Johnson, those and others. And I listened in on the air quality meeting that was going down the other day, and it was really concerning to me. This one pointed to South, and I was a little passionate, you know, 2.5. But a lot of the numbers that Ben was presenting or showing were primarily their red and really unhealthy, very unhealthy, hazardous ones were during the summer months. And their table went from 2004, I'm looking at the, at my phone, at the PDF that was shared during that presentation, and I was curious again on those dates. From 2013 till present, they really haven't had red days outside of the summer months. And, you know, historically, there were red days in previous years to that, but we're seeing a huge growth of wood smoke that we're having to deal with, which also affects our health. Now, it doesn't affect our plan, and I understand that because those are exempt, because they're out of our control. But I think really on a nationwide level, there needs to be something done more on wood smoke. And if we can focus more on assisting our senators and other representatives to figure that out, I think that's where our time would be best spent, in my opinion. I mean, this program is good, and I liked that they pointed out during that meeting that Lakeview is on the forefront of really pushing a proactive approach to working on this problem. I certainly can recognize that it is a problem. I mean, there's, there's no doubt in my mind that wood smoke does affect people's health. You know, it's a small minority, I guess, so to speak, on a real serious level. It all affects us on a small level, but the summer months really were stolen from us, from, in my opinion, from the wood smoke problem that happened. And I think that, you know, you know, I appreciate our firefighters and the work that they're doing. I wanted to get off this soapbox, but, but we've got to get something done, especially in the west on these forest fires. And it's, this really affects our health way worse. And there's proof that it's affected us way worse when we should be out recreating and having fun with our families. And still, we can't even have the pool. It really leaves a lot of revenue everywhere. Tourism has probably drastically hurt for us. It swells our hotels and other things. So, I mean, it's, that's the problem to me. It's not anywhere in at 20 below and, you know, we've got some inversions and everybody's spending their house anyways. Hopefully, comes up by that fire and enjoys some, you know, cool classical music.
We need to have books.
Do you have books or Amazon?
Right, in winter time is what we can control, so we try to invest air quality we can. When we can't control it, summertime is very, very important. Something that we're just starting to really think about is.
Well, I believe.
Is figuring out how to have even a starting point of air filtration, have HEPA filters, the high-efficiency particulate filters in senior centers, in libraries, wherever we don't have them already to have them there. We're looking at, another hat I wear is that summertime wood, wildfire smoke. We're looking at doing that and figuring out the funding sources through county health and emergency repairness. And how can we do it so we have even a, just a small handful of. How can we do it so we have even a, just a small handful of cleaner air spaces for people to go through? It doesn't help going outside, doesn't help with the pool, it's outside, but at least there's some places that people can take refuge. As we, as we start battling and deciding whether almost every home needs an air filtration device, if your home is in a tight home already, even if it is, it builds up. We had thirty days or something of, of poorer quality here this summer, it was horrible. And from hundreds of miles away, that's, that was just the heartbreaking part. It's from so far away, just a little bit from nearby, but so far away that it is hard. We're looking at, at, how to, attacking that question on a, on a statewide level, how do we deal with this? This is the biggest thing, we've got to deal with this, this southern Oregon gets hit by far more than anyone else, central Oregon second. On that list, very good, very good point.
I appreciate the work you're doing.
Oh, sure. I'm, I'm all for any particular reduction anywhere.
I have time.
Yeah, okay. There's nothing else, then we will adjourn the regular session at five twelve.